Good evening. I would like to call to order the Wednesday, June 4th, 2025 Plan Commission Meeting to order. Next on the agenda is the special allegiance and I would like to ask Vice Chair on the previous.
Right hand over your heart. Please kindly repurpose me that the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes. Ms. Aguila, please call the roll.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Roll call, please. Commissioner Al. Thank you. Commissioner Chauhan. Commissioner Javeri.
Present.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Here.
Chair Polito.
Present.
All members noted present for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Aguila. Item number four is public comments. This section is reserved for public comment on consent calendar and items, not listed on the agenda, but that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Verbal comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker, subject to the chair extending to a maximum of five minutes per speaker, with a total time allotted not exceeding forty-five minutes unless the chair extends. So at this time, do I have anyone that would like to make public comments? Please come to the podium and then kind of introduce yourself. Okay, I don't see anyone for public comments, so I move that public comments be closed. Next on the agenda is consent counter. I'm number five. Five A approval of the minutes. I would like to turn it over to Director Aguila.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Item five A this evening is approval of the Thursday, May 8th, 2025, 7:00 PM Planning Commission Special Meeting Minutes. I would like to note for the record that when the agenda was originally published, there was an error in the minutes before you today. The error was related to an incorrect title in the minutes for an item that was not considered on the May 8th agenda. And since then, thank you to Commissioner Al for bringing that to our attention. We have corrected the minutes and republished the unofficial minutes on the city's website and a copy is at the dais for each of you this evening. And so if appropriate, Chair, I'll turn it back to you to call for a motion for consideration of the minutes of May 8th. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Aguila. Do I have a motion to approve the May 8th, 2025 minutes?
I move to approve the Thursday, May 8th, 2025, seven o'clock, Planning Commission Special Meeting Minutes.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Great. So I have a motion by Commissioner Al, a second by Commissioner Chauhan. Ms. Aguila?
Yes, thank you. At this time, we'll go ahead and activate electronic voting. Voting is active. Okay, all votes in. Motion carries by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Aguila. Next on the is item number six, public hearing. Item number six A, Ms. Aguila?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Item six A this evening is consideration of wireless telecommunications permit 2025-1. For the benefit of the Planning Commission, since the reorganization, I would, before we begin and before staff's presentation, and because this is the first wireless facility brought before the majority of this Planning Commission, I would like to just briefly state that in regards to wireless telecommunications facilities, the regulatory authority for wireless facilities is that of the Federal Communications Commission, the FCC. While the city has authority to regulate the design, the stealthness of the wireless facility and placement in terms of high building-mounted, non-building-mounted, etc., the city is limited under the purview of the FCC and our regulatory authority over wireless facilities. That was noted in the agenda report, but similar to past meetings, when a new entitlement comes before the Planning Commission, I just wanted to provide that additional background. So with that said, the staff presentation for wireless telecommunications permit 2025-1 this evening will be provided by Associate Planner Wyman Wong. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aguila. Good evening, Chair and Cerritos Planning Commissioners. The applicant Coastal Business Group on behalf of AT&amp;T Mobility is requesting approval to construct a new wireless telecommunications facility under Wireless Telecommunication Permit 2025-1 on an existing Southern California Edison Transmission Tower located at a property currently used for vehicle storage purposes. For the details on this project, I would like to direct your attention to the screen for a presentation. This is an aerial photo of the subject property and location of the proposed wireless telecommunications facility, which is generally located north of Artesia Boulevard and east of the San Gable River Channel. The subject property is zoned open space overlay OS1. The subject property is bordered on the east and west by industrial properties and to the south by Artesia Boulevard, where across our property is zoned open space. This is an enlarged aerial view that shows the subject property outlined in blue and the location of the proposed wireless facility circled in red. This is a view from within the property looking at the existing Edison Transmission Tower on the southern end of the subject property, which is the location for the proposed wireless facility. This is a view of the location for the proposed wireless telecommunications facility looking south. This is a site plan showing a portion of the subject property. The red circle indicates the location of the proposed wireless telecommunications facility. These are the proposed antenna plans. On the left side are red circles outlining the locations of the remote radio units. On the right side are red circles outlining the new antenna antennas, both of which will be mounted on the transmission tower. The antennas will be located sixty feet from ground level and the remote radio units will be located forty-eight from ground level. This is the floor plan of the proposed equipment enclosure, which should be located beneath the transmission tower and wireless facility. As proposed, the enclosure will contain five support equipment cabinets and one global positioning antenna, all located within the enclosure. On the left side is the north elevation and on the right side is the south elevation of the SCE Transmission Tower with the proposed wireless facility. Project specific condition approval 81 was added to ensure that the proposed equipment enclosure exterior will be constructed of decorative slump block to match other wireless building facilities' equipment enclosures, subject to review and approval of the Department of Community Development. On the left side is the east elevation, on the right side is the west elevation of the SCE Transmission Tower with the proposed wireless facility. The applicant has also provided several photo simulations to show how the proposed wireless facility will look upon completion. The image on the left shows the existing conditions and the image on the right shows the proposed wireless facility and enclosure looking southwest. These photo simulation views are looking west. These photo simulation views are looking southeast. And lastly, these photo simulation views are looking east. On the screen are two coverage maps. The map on the left shows wireless coverage without the proposed wireless facility. The light green colored areas on the map show coverage and the light yellow and purple color areas show weak outdoor coverage. On the right side, this map shows coverage with the wireless proposed facility. As you can see, the proposed wireless facility indicated in the right and the red circle provides much-needed wireless coverage in this area. Staff in the city's wireless technical consultant have reviewed the request to install a new wireless telecommunications facility as discussed this evening and have determined that the facility is compatible with the purpose and intent of the city's wireless ordinance and it meets FCC guidelines for wireless facilities. As mentioned, this is a new wireless facility and entitlements and approval for the facility will enable AT&amp;T Mobility to provide coverage in and around the area of the facility. As such, it is recommended that the Planning Commission discuss the information provided, conduct a public hearing, and adopt a resolution number PC 2025-8 approving Wireless Telecommunication Permit 2025-1 request to install a new wireless facility. This ends the PowerPoint portion of the presentation. Staff has determined that the facility is category exempt from CEQA. All property owners within five hundred feet were notice of this item. Staff received one public comment interested on wired facilities in other locations in the city. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the commissioners have and then the audience is the applicant representative who can also address the commissioners' questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman, for the staff report. Next, I want to check if my colleagues have any questions or comments. I'll begin with Mr. Javeri. Thank you, Mr. Javeri. Commissioner Chauhan?
Thank you for the report. I like reading technical reports. The question I have is, even though this is the AT&amp;T antenna, does it serve only the AT&amp;T or is it co-sharing the tower?
Currently, this is just for AT&amp;T only.
So I do like it. I like the expansion of 5G LTE, so overall, good plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chauhan. Mr. Al, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just have a point for clarification. I discussed this with Kristen before the meeting and I'd like, just for the information of my colleagues on the commission. The question is this. In the municipal code 2240120-3C about setbacks, the second item says that a minimum of 250 feet in a straight line to any street or highway as measured from the curb. So it looks like this tower is less than 250 feet away from the nearest street, which is the Artesia Boulevard. But my understanding is, especially after my discussion with Kristen, is that this point alone is not going to disqualify this project. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Al, for the question and for clarification. For the benefit of the Planning Commission, I'll provide a little bit more information. What Commissioner Al is referring to under the municipal code is the city's ranking system for criteria regulating the location, placement, and design of wireless facilities. Now, in the municipal code, there's various criteria, and I'll get specifically to the one you reference, but there's various criteria that we can evaluate. We can evaluate the stealthness of the facility. Does it blend into the structure that it's being placed on? The height to which the facility is being placed. The setback to what you're referring for, I'll get back to that. The zone and whether, if it is, to Commissioner Chauhan's question, if it is going to be co-located with another carrier, what does that co-location look like, etc.? There's outlined in the municipal code several criteria amongst the ones I just discussed. Now, that criteria determines the wireless facility's compatibility with the location to which it's at, with adjacent uses, and really the criteria for its, whether, the design review, the level to which a wireless facility can be processed. There are certain points allocated to each of those criterias and then more, and then based on the overall ranking, the total number of points for its ability to be stealth, its setback from residential uses, or setback from adjacent streets or highways. Based on the points determines whether or not the facility is determined to have impact to the community, location, placement, and design. And if so, if based on the points, it's either subject to being denied administratively, subject to design review by the Planning Commission and the City Council, and then lastly, subject to design review administratively just by staff. And so for this facility, it was, it met the point criteria to just come to the Planning Commission. And one of the criteria that you discussed, you are absolutely correct, the proposed location of this facility in the equipment enclosure, for that, excuse me, for the setback criteria, one of the criteria is, does it, is it within 200 straight-line distance from a street or a highway? And in this case, it is, and it's given a point accordingly, a point in the overall ranking system for that. So you are correct, it is within 200 feet of an arterial street. It doesn't disqualify them, it gives them a point for that overall ranking system. And I should have said this earlier, but I would refer you to page 45 of the agenda report, which is Exhibit 20, which is the city's wireless telecommunications facility criteria checklist. And that's where staff uses it internally to rank in accordance with the municipal code and determine how many points the proposed facility receives, which then determines, as I discussed, the level to which the facility is reviewed administratively, Planning Commission only, Planning Commission, City Council, or denied. So I hope I answered your question. That's a lot of background, but we do have with the expansion by the carriers for 5G service, we do have, you know, an uptick in wireless telecommunications facilities. And so this won't be your last wireless facility that comes before the Planning Commission, and so I wanted to provide that additional background. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the detailed explanation.
Thank you, Commissioner Al. Commissioner Vice Chair Reyes?
Thank you, Madam Chair Polito. So basically, we have limited say into these buildings because, like the director said, FCC regulates all the wireless communication and CEQA, this is exempt from CEQA review. So I think that we are looking at the static value of what's going on here, because I consider this like an addition to somebody's house, because it is piggybacking to an existing structure. So we're adding antennas, GPS, and an enclosure in an existing structure. So it seems, feels like somebody adding an ADU in their house. So the question is, without ADU, will look pleasant and, you know, fits into the location, design, and placement of the existing structure. And I think the staff did a wonderful presentation and it falls into all that stuff. And my, one thing I saw was that, did I read it right, that they were looking, once this is approved, if it's approved, that there's a 90-day projected plan to complete it in 90 days, something like that? Or what's, how long are they going to build this?
That is their projected timeframe, but you probably want to ask the applicant how their timeline is, because they always have a timeline set, but something always might set them back.
So if everything goes right, when can they start this? If it goes, gets approved by the commission and then goes to the City Council, when is the earliest start date that they can move on to this project? Are they waiting for us for the approval or do they have a time in mind?
I can go ahead and answer that question. So this one won't go to City Council, but following the Planning Commission, if, consideration this evening, if the Planning Commission motions by a majority of the Planning Commission to adopt the resolution approving the wireless telecommunications permit, the AT&amp;T or the applicant will be required to submit a construction plans to the city that undergo review. And in terms of when they want to start construction, I would defer to the applicant, but essentially, in short, are they waiting for your approval to build? Absolutely, because it requires consideration by the Planning Commission as the Wireless Telecommunication Design Review Board and adoption of a resolution authorizing the wireless telecommunications permit.
But we are not the last place that they have to go, because you said they still have to submit a construction plan.
Correct.
So we are not the one holding the project.
So you're not holding the project by way of the resolution before you this evening. You are either approving the project or denying the project, and then following, if it is by majority motion approved this evening, it's not the last step. They have to submit plans to the city and the next step is just all administratively by community development staff, Mr. Wong.
All right, great. One more question, because I don't, I don't think that the graphics of the affected area was part of our package, because that was the first time I've seen. Can I look at it again? Who's affected? Because I don't know. I don't, I didn't see that in my pack. So if we can, because I would like to zoom in. I want to find out who benefits, how, what communities, what neighborhood is affected and who benefits from this tower. So can you explain to me who, or do we have a better picture on that coverage?
I think we can go ahead and defer to the applicant. However, the red circle on the screen before you is the area to which the facility will be located. This area encompasses properties, and we can defer to the applicant for further clarification, both in the city of Cerritos, residential, commercial, industrial properties, as well as, I believe, looking at the image on the screen, properties within the city of Belflour. And not only is a positive benefit to people who live, work in Cerritos, but anybody driving through that area of the city with AT&amp;T will have increased coverage. The coverage map on the screen serves to illustrate the added coverage with the image on the right of the screen, the green area, showing the coverage scope after the facility and the image on the left, you'll see like the light yellow, light purple area showing gaps in coverage.
So mostly this will be, it will enhance and more, it will?
Increase coverage.
Increase coverage. So mostly Gore High School is there and Cemetery and the mall probably part of that?
The mall would be just slightly south, but yeah, it would increase coverage in the general vicinity of the new facility.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes. I had just one question, just for piggybacking off of Commissioner Chauhan, because he had asked a question about if it just, who it impacts, because he said just AT&amp;T. So customers, so do we have an idea of how many towers we have and how many from each of the different companies?
If I may ask clarification, are you talking citywide?
Yes.
I don't have the information in front of me today, but over the years, the city has, by way of the Wireless Telecommunication Permit, approved, I don't know, I would check with Mr. Wong to see if he has a general idea, but numerous wireless facilities, small cell facilities, the facility that's before you today for multiple carriers. We have T-Mobile, Verizon Wireless, Verizon Wireless, AT&amp;T, Crown Castle, Dish, lots of carriers, lots of facilities in the city. And hopefully, through coordination with the Planning Commission and the great work of staff and working with the great applicants, we have designed these facilities to be stealth, so that unless you're, you know, really looking for this facility, they blend in with the built environment that exists in Cerritos.
Thank you. Commissioner Javeri?
To your question, to the question that was raised, how many such sites? This was, I think, had come up previously as well. This was, I think, had come up previously as well, couple of years ago, and then the staff had given some numbers, I don't remember the exactly, but somewhere between thirty, thirty-five uh, of them.
Um, I would defer to Mr. Wong, do you, I mean, you don't have to know an exact number, would you say it's more or less than thirty-five facilities?
If you're talking about everything from small cells to the, when you see it now for the transmission towers, also there's building mounted, there's more than thirty-five, you're looking probably maybe around double that number, around sixty, 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 sixty-five?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more um, questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay, um, now I would like to open the public hearing, so anyone that would like to comment on um, item number six A, if you can please come to the podium? Um, seeing none, um, public hearing is closed. Um, now I'd like to entertain a motion um, for item six A.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Javari, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Al, Ms. Agula?
Yes, thank you. So we have a first by Commissioner Javari, a second by Commissioner Al, if I may um, get the power, thank you. A first by Commissioner Javari and Commissioner, second by Commissioner Al. At this time, I'll activate the electronic voting. Electronic voting is activated. Okay, uh, due to technical difficulties, we'll do a verbal uh, roll call vote, okay? Commissioner Al?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Chowhan?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Javari?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Reyes?
Yes.
Thank you. Chair Polito?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of five to zero.
I think we're gonna have a better reception now, right? Once it's get approved?
If you have AT&T and you're driving by that facility...
For our, for our, uh, for our computer.
To, to be determined.
Thank you. Um, next, um, on the agendas, um, item number seven, new and old business. Item number seven A, Director Agula.
Thank you Chair Polito. Item seven A this evening is an informational report to the planning commission on a minor precise plan approval. So minor precise plan is minor interior and exterior improvements. Uh, they are typically reviewed and processed at an administrative staff level, um, occasionally due to uh, improvements in prominent locations of the mall, or excuse me, of the city, in this case, at Los Cerritos Center, the mall. Um, or uh, due to the exciting uh, projects uh, that come before uh, the Department of Community Development and the city, um, and the city's interest in informing the public and the planning commission, uh, that is a minor precise plan in nature. So the item before you uh, tonight is a minor precise plan proposed by Chick-fil-A for interior and exterior improvements, again, minor improvements, um, at their existing restaurant at Los Cerritos Center. So this uh, report this evening will be presented by Senior Planner Jeremy Lo. Thank you.
Thank you Kristin. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the planning commission. Chick-fil-A Restaurant is requesting approval to complete interior and exterior improvements at its existing restaurant located within the Los Cerritos Center at one eight six zero five Gridley Road. Improvements include a three hundred and sixty square foot addition, the expansion of an existing drive-through service lane canopy, the construction of a new freestanding drive-through service lane canopy, reorientation of the existing trash enclosure, and minor interior improvements. Based on the limited scope of the proposed improvements, the Cerritos Municipal Code provides for the project to be reviewed as a minor precise plan, approved administratively by the Department of Community Development. However, since this project is located in a prominent commercial area of the city, the proposed project is being referred to the planning commission for informational purposes prior to formal administrative approval. The following slides will describe the details of the proposed project. The subject property is generally located west of Gridley Road and south of one hundred eighty-third Street at the Los Cerritos Center, which is zoned regional commercial or CR. This is a closer, closer aerial view of the existing restaurant location within the Los Cerritos Center. This is a view looking southwest at the front entrance of the existing restaurant. This is a view looking northeast at the existing restaurant. And this is a view looking northeast at the existing trash enclosure. This is the, an enlarged site plan showing the existing restaurant building footprint. In red is the proposed three hundred and sixty square foot building addition near the bottom of the screen. Also in red is the location of the new and expanded drive-through service lane canopies. And finally, in red, the reoriented, the reoriented trash enclosure. This is the proposed floor plan. Once completed, the addition will contain a new freezer and storage area for back-of-house operations, in addition to interior improvements. This is the proposed roof plan. This is a cross-section plan showing that the new roof-mounted equipment will be a minimum of six inches below the existing screen or parapet walls. Here are details of the new freestanding canopy structure. The new canopy and the extended existing canopy will feature fans and heaters for Chick-fil-A team members working within the drive-through service lanes. This is the proposed north elevation of the restaurant building. The proposed addition at the right-hand side of this, at the right-hand side of the slide will match the existing enhanced materials of the existing restaurant building and will feature limestone veneer and, and a sandstone wainscot, as well as beige, beige colored stucco with darker brown trims and accents. A material and color board has been provided for the commission at the dais. This is the proposed south elevation with the proposed expanded canopy and installation of heaters and fans. Here we have a perspective rendering looking southeast provided by the applicant to illustrate the proposed addition. And this is a perspective rendering looking northeast to illustrate the addition and, and the extended canopy area. At this time, it is recommended that the planning commission review and discuss the Chick-fil-A Restaurant's proposed exterior remodel and obtain public testimony regarding the project. This ends the PowerPoint presentation. Staff has determined that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act review. As a result of the public notification, staff has received one public comment in support of the project and provided to the commission. And then I would be happy to answer any questions at this time. A representative from Chick-fil-A, as well as the project civil engineer are in the audience tonight and can answer any questions if needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lo, for the staff report. Um, now I would ask any questions or comments from my colleagues. Commissioner Al?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I love Chick-fil-A, go, go there pretty often. Uh, and I like this plan for, you know, the um, the addition of canopy and uh, this is definitely gonna, you know, make it, uh, make it easier for people waiting in line to get their orders, especially those sitting in convertibles. I have a que- a couple of questions. The first question is, um, well, actually, thank you, Mr. Lo, uh, for using the word reoriented, the, the trash enclosure, because in the packet, uh, uses the word relocated. So I was wondering, uh, where does it relocate from and where it is relocated to? And is there gonna be any new environmental impact? Now you're saying that uh, it's just reoriented, uh, and actually, I asked uh, Kristin about this before the meeting, and she told me it was just facing east, facing west, and so presumably, the environment, uh, environmental impact would be the same, right? Wouldn't, there wouldn't be any negative impact?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, second question is that um, in the packet, it says that on the canopy, they're gonna use a metal roof. Is there any consideration uh, about using solar panels instead of just metal roof?
Okay, so um, there might be some confusion there. Uh, actually, this is a perfect slide to show that, but on the right-hand side of the screen, in fact, let me uh, indicate it, this is actually the metal canopy that's referred to and the metal that's on the materials and color board. The actual canopies above the drive-through service lane, um, they'll be standard, like a flat roof, maybe a TPO, like a membrane. Um, the project architect or civil engineer might be able to answer that question, but as far as metal is concerned, uh, it's just this canopy over the uh, over the new door at the addition. Now, as far as solar panels are concerned, over the new drive-through service lane canopies, uh, I might have to defer to the project uh, team for that.
Uh, thank you. My last question is, when they are doing this renovation, uh, they're gonna still continue with their business?
So um, I actually briefly spoke with the team uh, this evening, and due to the nature of the construction proposed, they're going to have to close the drive-through um, during construction.
Uh, hopefully, that's not too long. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Al. Vice Chair Reyes?
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Chick-fil-A, you know, great company, great company, and a wonderful community partner, because I know that they are involved in different organizations, gives money to the community and, and it's um, it's really an asset to have Chick-fil-A in, in, in Cerritos. And um, it's great that they are renovating and fixing, to me, that's a sign that they're, they're doing well, and they're here to stay for, for long term. So that's good news for the community, for the revenue, and service to the, services to the community. And talking about signs, because I also read that they will be changing the signs in the, in the store, correct? But that will need a separate review process. Is that because we need, we separated them, or is it because they're not ready to give us their requirement to submit the request for a new sign?
So signage is its own permit, so it, it is submitted separately. They could, I mean, the signs that are being proposed are essentially the same, the, they haven't changed their logo, they haven't changed their branding at all, it's just a refresh, so new channel letter signs to replace the old ones. Um, and so that's just an administrative action.
Okay, so it's, it's, it's our process to treat them separately, not in a package that they cannot be built into this renovation. Sign has to be discussed separately, the signage itself has to be discussed separately.
Yes, so staff reviews that separately, it gets its own building permit, um, but when it's submitted, you know, it doesn't have, it's not reliant on this application.
So we will see that in the future, uh, probably.
Uh, no, you won't.
Oh, we won't. Uh, that's a separate, uh, it doesn't go before the commission.
That's correct.
I see, okay.
But essentially, it's the same sign, you're looking at it, you're looking at it now.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Vice Chair Reyes. Commissioner Chowhan?
I am very familiar with this location, so I know exactly what's being proposed and I like it. Um, it is consistent with other Chick-fil-A's and protecting the young workers from the sun. You know, we're, we usually are in the car, so we're okay, but adding this to me is wonderful. But I must also commend Chick-fil-A for employing these young students. Getting that first job is the most important attribute that these young scholars will get, and it will serve them well. Chick-fil-A, to me, does a wonderful job with the food and the training of the young people project, I like it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chowhan. Commissioner Javari?
I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have no um, questions, a lot of the um, comments um, have already been said that I would like to echo. I need to open the public.
Thank you Chair Polito. If no additional comments or questions, there is no motion needed, this is an informational report, so if there's no additional questions or comments, we can proceed to the next item on the agenda, uh, unless you want to, oh, I apologize, if you want to open up for public comment, uh, we can do that as well to allow if the applicant wants to speak or anybody else in the audience, now would be the appropriate time to do so. My apologies.
Thank you Director Agula. Um, anyone would like um, to make public comment on the agenda, item seven A, please come to the podium? Okay, I'm seeing no, no one, um, public comment is closed, and, and thank you to Chick-fil-A, congratulations. Next is item seven B, um, a resolution of the Cerritos Planning Commission, finding the proposed city of Cerritos capital improvement program for fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six in conformity with the Cerritos general plan. Ms. Agula?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as the planning commission may be aware, uh, the Cerritos City Council is currently uh, holding uh, several study sessions of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget. And as part of that process is the city's capital improvement program and uh, the projects under the capital improvement program being reviewed and considered by the city council. Under the California Government Code, uh, the planning commission uh, reviews the capital improvement program before adopted by the city council, uh, to determine its uh, conformity with the city of Cerritos general plan. And in order to determine that conformance, uh, the planning commission makes findings that it is in conformity and in compliance with uh, the city's general plan. So for uh, an overview of the capital improvement program, a brief overview of the capital improvement program and the goals of the Cerritos general plan that it conforms to, um, I will turn your attention over to Assistant City Engineer Jared Lee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agula. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Cerritos Planning Commission. This is a gen item seven B, where we're gonna review and consider to waive full reading of and adopt the resolution of the Cerritos Planning Commission, finding the proposed city of Cerritos capital improvement program for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, in conformity with the Cerritos general plan. The capital improvement program, also known as CIP, is a program which includes projects that represent an assessment of the improvement needs and requirements of the city. The city council reviewed a draft CIP during their first meeting in May. Review of the proposed program provides an opportunity to discuss the status of upcoming public improvements and ensure they are in conformity with the city's general plan. The capital improvement program is divided into the following categories: government buildings, other projects, parks and open space, sewer improvements, streets and highways, traffic signals, and water improvements. The general plan, you can find this on the city of Cerritos's website, it provides the policy framework for the long-term physical development of the community. It links community values, visions, and objectives with the way land and other community resources are used, and it outlines goals and policies to support the city's overall vision. The capital improvement program addresses the following five elements from the Cerritos general plan: circulation, conservation, growth management, housing, and open space recreation. For the circulation element, one of the goals is to enhance the safety of all motorists on the city's street system, and the policy is to evaluate and upgrade substandard intersections or roadway segments. For the conservation element, the goals are to protect and conserve the city of Cerritos' existing and future water resources, and to ensure the adequate conveyance of stormwater and introduce techniques and methods that reduce the presence of pollutants, consistent with regional, state, and federal standards. For the growth management element, the goals are, for water and sewer service should be adequate to meet the health and safety needs of... For the growth management element, the goals are for water and sewer service should be adequate to meet the health and safety needs of residents and businesses in Cerritos, and to ensure stormwater conveyance systems are adequate. For the housing element, the goal is to encourage the provision of a wide range of housing types. And for open space recreation element, the goal is to continue to expand and improve recreational resources within existing facilities. Now I'm gonna go through all the projects we have on the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six Capital Improvement Program. We have a budget of twenty-three million dollars for this, and I'll start with the first one. The annual citywide facility LED light conversion. That's a project we have where existing uh buildings, when the lights fail, we're gonna replace all these old fluorescent lamps with LED lights. The Cerritos Center for the Performing Arts Accessibility Ramps, Handrails, and Light Lighting Project, that is across the street over at the CCPA, we're gonna provide additional ramps, handrails. Uh you know, we're trying to make it safe over there for the elderly residents and uh customers that come over to CCPA to watch a show. The Cerritos Center for the Performing Arts Roof Replacement, uh the roof over there leaks time to time, uh especially the Sierra Room. So if we have a day like yesterday when it rained, obviously, we had leaks going on over there. So this project is gonna uh take care of those issues over there. The citywide facility condition condition assessment is a master plan. Uh basically, like a report, we're gonna document all the existing buildings we have in the city. Uh basically, keep a log of everything we have going on in the city. So buildings like the uh senior center, library, uh we're just gonna document everything in that master plan. The Civic Center HVAC Replacement and Appertinent Improvement Project, that deals with City Hall and in this room that we're in now, with the heating, the ventilation, the air conditioning, uh we're gonna improve that. The appertinent improvement part would be, we're working on office space inside City Hall. When we hire additional people, we need uh more office space. So uh we're gonna work with an architect to develop develop that. The Library Skyline Room Improvement Project, that is on the third floor over at the Cerritos Library. There's a room there where they have baby showers and events. So there's a wall where you can move it left or right, depending on how many people you have in the room. They're having issues mobilizing that. So this project will uh will allow them to have easier access to either make it a smaller room or a larger room. The Asset Management Program is another master plan we have, another report. Uh basically, you could think of it as like a guideline on how we wanna uh uh improve all the uh future projects we have in the city. So that is uh basically shows us how we're gonna manage our assets. The Citywide Facility Network Infrastructure Project, that goes hand-in-hand with our arterial paving project. That is uh the fiber optic line that goes into the street. We place conduit, uh which is, you know, PVC pipe in the ground, and then we pave on top of that. The Fleet Replacement Master Plan is another master plan. Uh this is where we log and keep track of all the city maintenance vehicles, code enforcement vehicles. Basically, we want a log of all those uh those vehicles so we can keep track of when they need to be maintained, when they need to be replaced. The Historical Cow Milking Time Sculpture Project. We already purchased that sculpture. Uh this phase of the project is just installing it. The Proposed Mixed-Use Residential Infill Development, that is a project where an encumbrance of the city's housing funds for potential development of affordable housing, uh this is pursuant to a state housing law. Parks and Open Space, we have the Annual Golf Course Refurbishment Project. This allows us to keep Ironwood Nine looking great. The funds here fix the tee boxes, the fairways, and the greens. We have a citywide playground improvement project that basically takes care of the uh say, we wanna replace slides or swings or equipment of the of that nature. Uh that's what that project's for. We have a citywide playground resurfacing program that deals with the rubberized surfaces that the kids run around on. Uh this provides additional funding for replacement of that. The Heritage Park Play Island Renovation Project, this deals with the northern side of the island. That would be if you were walking over from Cerritos High School onto the island on the left-hand side where the pirate ship is, those buildings on the left, uh it's been closed for a few years now due to safety issues. Uh our goal is to get that back up and operational. We had an architect do a report, and he provided us with comments on how to uh get it back open. So that includes uh renovation on those buildings, replacing equipment, et cetera. So our goal is to get that going. Hopefully, in a few months, we can get that portion up and running. Picnic Shelter renovations at various parks, this would be um the shelters at various parks. Frontier Park is the one first on the list. Uh you've heard about this at the council meetings where they have a neighborhood watch committee go over there and their shelter was removed. So this project addresses that. Biennial Rehabilitation Replacement of Sewer Lift Stations. Uh we have several lift stations in the city. Uh sewer lift station is, so say at your house, you take a shower, all the drainage goes down the sewer pipe in it. If it can't get to a treatment plant, it goes to a lift station. From the lift station, you have pumps, it'll pump it to a point high enough where it could flow from gravity, and it'll go down to a treatment plant. So this project provides funding if we have to replace the pumps or do maintenance on it. Streets and Highways, annual arterial landscaping at various locations. Okay, this project deals with arterial landscaping. So arterial would be the larger roads we have in the city, such as Bloomfield or One Ninety-Fifth, et cetera. Uh but the one that happened last year was over on Shoemaker and South Street. So picture Shadow Park on your left, Leo Elementary ahead of you. So on the right side of that road, uh we fixed uh some of the concrete curbs on the sidewalks. We planted some landscaping. So that's what that project takes care of. The Annual Arterial Street Rehabilitation Project, that's again, on our larger streets. Not only is it paving, but we remove trees, uh fix concrete work, ADA ramps, irrigation. Um that project takes care of all of that. Annual Residential Parkway Tree and Sidewalk Inspection and Repair Program. This one's focused on residential neighborhoods. Uh we go in there, we we remove trees, remove the stumps, uh fix the sidewalks, fix the irrigation, reseed, plant a new tree. The Annual Residential Pine Tree Reforestation Program, that is the the project where you put your name on a list and uh the pine trees are removed. That list is very long, so it doesn't happen overnight. I'm sure we get a lot, we get a lot of complaints that, you know, when's my tree gonna come down? It's a very long list. The Annual Residential Street Rehabilitation Project, that goes hand-in-hand with the one two above it. Same idea, we go on a residential track, remove trees, uh fix the sidewalks, but this one also fixes the paving. So if the paving is in decent condition, we just slurry seal. But for the ones that are in worser conditions, we grind and pave, remove a couple inches and put new asphalt on top. We have the Annual Sidewalk Curtain Gutter Rehabilitation Pro- uh Project. Uh self-explanatory takes care of our sidewalk curb and gutters. You know, we got a lot of issues with standing water in our city, and uh this helps address some of those issues. The Annual Wheelchair Accessible Ramps Program, uh inside residential tracks on the corners. That's where we wanna put ADA ramps. So this uh project takes care of that. We have a CDBG-funded curb ramp sidewalk repairs at Cerritos Town Center. This project's been going on every year annually, three to four, I think they've done three to four times already. So this would be where the CCPA in that area, same idea, fixing uh ADA ramps. The Delamo Boulevard Bridge Replacement Project, this one's been going on since uh right after COVID. We are still in the design phase. We still have a couple more years of design and then a couple years of construction. So if everything falls into place, we can have that bridge up and running in five years. The Annual Traffic Safety Corridor Improvement Project, that provides funds for replacing traffic-related items such as, if you look in the photo, no U-turn signs, stop signs, not a through-street signs, uh those green signs near the lights that call out the main streets, we replace those. Painting on the ground where we call out stop, stop marks, uh this project takes care of that. Water Improvement Projects, we have an annual miscellaneous reclaimed water conversion project. This deals with converting uh potable water into uh reclaimed water. Uh we had a a uh customer who had to water his nursery, but he's using potable water instead, which costs, you know, twice as much as reclaimed water. So this project's gonna address issues like that where we would, you know, hot tap, we would take a reclaimed water, go off the reclaimed water line, uh put a new meter so we can service that kind of business with uh reclaimed water. The Annual NPDES Implementation Program, that deals with environmental issues. Basically, it treats, it's a project where you wanna prevent stormwater pollution. So uh we have money set aside in there to to deal with that. We have an annual valve replacement program. So this is, we replace water valves. We just did one over on South and uh Bloomfield over by the old uh where Carol's is right now. We replaced the butterfly valve. So we just go in there. They use the isolate the valves, drain the pipe. They'll cut the pipe on each side, put a new valve in, put a three-to-five-foot spool piece, and they'll weld on a butt strap, and that's how they uh assemble a uh butterfly valve. The Benton Court Reclaimed Water Line Repair and Termination Project. So this one's over on the east side of the city in the area where the McDonald's is, South and Carmonita, uh by Benton Court Park. It's just the reclaimed water line where we're gonna do some repairs on that one. C4 Well Site Chlorine Room Modifications. So this goes in hand with well C4, which is located at Reservoir Park over by the six oh five and ninety-one freeway. Last year's CIP, we had another project where we dealt with the treatment. This is almost like a carryover project. We're gonna come in and uh take care of the chlorination equipment at that well. Right now, we use chlorine gas. We're gonna switch over to sodium hypochlorite for that one. The Citywide Catch Basin retrofit project. This is one where we have several catch basins throughout the city. We're gonna put filters inside the catch basin. So if we have a rainy day like yesterday, all the leaves in the street, it goes down to the catch basin and and ends up at the beach. What we're gonna do is we put these filters inside the catch basin. So when it does rain and goes in there, we could have maintenance crews go out, pop the manhole, and they could pull out, and you have all the leaves right there. So um that's that project. We have a well desander replacement project. We're trying to implement and put in a uh desander at each of the wells we have. Uh the sander is, it's a large, you can picture a large pipe. It's basically like a filter. So the way water wells work, you have a pump in the ground. It doesn't just pump up water. Sometimes there's a lot of sand. So as it comes up, we don't want, we don't want sand in our distribution line, right? So these desanders filter it out, and uh it works out pretty good that way. Um so that's the list I have for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six Capital Improvement Program. I wanna note that we had one public comment that was received for gen item seven B, and it's been noted for the record. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission find the proposed two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six Capital Improvement Program in conformity with the Cerritos General Plan, and waifull reading of and adopt the resolution captioned as follows: "A resolution of the Cerritos Planning Commission finding the proposed city of Cerritos Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six in conformity with the Cerritos General Plan." Uh if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, for the staff report. Um next, I'm gonna check my colleagues for any questions or comments. Commissioner Javari?
Thank you. I have no questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Chauhan?
Question. Um the annual facility LED light conversion. So we're kicking over from fluorescent to LED. Are we swapping out one waist versus another from mercury to E-waste now? Where's the benefit?
So the benefit of the fact, Commissioner, thank you for the question, is with regards to fluorescent lamps, they're no longer commercially available in California as of January first, twenty twenty-five. So we're actually, we're, we're no longer able to use our purchased product to be able to replace it. So um to be proactive, we're beginning to convert to LED um temporarily. In the, as part of the CIP program next year, we'll be conducting a facility-wide facility condition assessment. So we will be evaluating all of facilities, looking at the lighting, and as part of that, we'll also be looking at energy efficiency. So we're going to be looking at efficiencies with regards to our existing bulbs, our existing infrastructure, and we'll holistically look at every single building at the city and say, okay, does it make sense to replace this with a newer technology that is going to be cheaper, more efficient, and will help reduce the city's electricity costs? Um with regards to um electronic waste, uh everything we build ultimately will become obsolete. But my understanding from LEDs, they're, the new technology, they're lasting longer, um they're cheaper to maintain. They're also a lot lighter, and they they actually burn a lot cooler. Um so there there is a lot of benefit with regards to uh how long they will last. I mean, manufacturers claim twenty, twenty-five years, uh but mileage will vary depending on the location, if it's inside, outside, et cetera.
Understood. That was more of a rhetorical question than anything else. Everything else made sense when I was looking at it. First, you see this, and then you go to the sheet where the allocated dollars are, and then it starts to make a little more sense. What is this new asset management program?
Yes, so asset management, uh so it's a way that we can better manage our our assets and our infrastructure. So in the City of Cerritos, we have roads that we manage with a pavement management program. Um and that, with that, we're able to assess, okay, how, what good of a condition is our infrastructure? How much does it cost to maintain that infrastructure? How much of an investment do we have to make to keep it at a condition of average, good, or excellent? Um and also, it's like, how often should we be maintaining it? Should we be paving our streets every five years, every ten, every fifteen? So while some portions of our infrastructure, we have things like the pavement management plan, not all of them, uh we don't have them for everything. So our buildings, our facilities, our parks, um those are all assets that we need to be able to manage effectively. I would say most cities, eighty percent of cities are reactive. Something breaks, we fix it. Um and it's, if we did that with our cars, we'd be in bad shape, right? We don't wait for our cars to break before fixing it. We know that we need to get oil changes at regular intervals. We know that you get the signal, the warning light on your car, and you take it to the dealer and get it serviced. So that's actually a little more proactive maintenance. Um the City of Cerritos has a lot of deferred maintenance. There's there's stuff that's been broken that hasn't been fixed. There is stuff that um we could proactively be fixing, but we're not. Um and so an asset management program is um a couple of things. It's- It's software that will help staff identify repairs that need to be done before they need to be done. It's also a program that helps them track when a repair is done. They can put it in the program so that we can look historically at what's been done, what equipment has been put in there so we can help understand in the future what was done in the past, so we know what part to buy, we know what they did. But even more importantly, what we're going to do as part of this estimate management program is also developing a report. So that report is going to look at the way that we manage, you know, are we reactive? Are we proactive? Or are we, do we want to be predictive with our management, fixing things before they need to be broken, or before they're broken by using tools like AI? We're going to engage stakeholders in the city council and find out what is the level of service that is expected, right? Do city council and the residents want the bare minimum of replacement? Do they want the Cadillac, or you want like a Toyota Camry? Like, we need to know that level of service so we can begin to maintain. And then we'll look at all our processes, our procedures, and try to structure those in a way so that on all different, for every single asset class that we have in the city, we're making investments that are proactive and sustainable in the long run, and that so city council can understand how we're spending it. So the asset management is hard because a lot of people will say that it's software, but it's more a program in a sense that we're going to have documentation on how we will manage our assets, and then also developing the software and the framework on how to move forward in the future.
Thank you. No, seriously, I do understand asset. Having come from a big agency, there's a lot of assets that the city has to manage. So I was looking forward to seeing how this platform works. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chauhan. Commissioner Al?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a comment and a question. The comment is that of all four agenda reports, this is the longest and most involved and most extensive. Took me the longest time to read, but I wasn't able to find anything that's not in conformity with the general plan, which means that we have an excellent staff, an excellent city council, and everything was done properly. So thank you very much. My question is this. All the project numbers, they either start with a one or two. Is there any significance? And is there any relationship between these two numbers? And related to that, like for instance, 10073 is citywide playground improvements, and then 23106 is citywide playground resurfacing program. Wouldn't those two be more or less the same thing? That resurfacing is part of the improvement? Or am I mistaken? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir, for the questions. With regards to the naming convention, I wasn't here when they created those. Typically, I would say historically in practice, a lot of engineering departments like to make it so that the first two numbers are the year of the CIP, and the remaining numbers are the number of projects in that year. I would say in the City of Cerritos, I don't know if we've followed that consistently throughout the years, but we are looking to change that in the future. So, but in short, there's no correlation. I know that some projects that were 1900, some of they may have been a program that started back in 2019 and just has continued every year, whereas some of the projects like the 23s are new projects for that year. But to be honest, I haven't seen a consistent pattern, and the staff that was here that was naming the projects is no longer here. But we'll be looking to adjust that moving forward. With regards to the question about the two park projects, yes, they could be lumped together, but I think for the purposes of the CIP and separating projects, the decision was made to explicitly separate out the playground surfacing because that is a priority and it's a priority safety project. So we wanted to separate that out so that they can focus. And that's more like a program. So every year, the goal is to target a certain park and be able to handle that resurfacing project. While other, the other project is more things like repairing slides or repairing equipment. And so there would be, if we awarded a contractor, we could award a contractor, somebody specific to doing the playground resurfacing, then somebody specific to handling the playground equipment.
I see. So the improvements is just anything, any improvement other than resurfacing?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then I would also add, thank you, Mr. Papa. I would also add that it's not uncommon for the capital improvement program to categorize projects or separate projects based on grants that are provided to the city or funding. While in the CIP, it does indicate general fund monies. I know historically, and the great, through the great work of the Community and Cultural Services Department, pursue grants for all of the recreation facilities. And it's not uncommon, say, for the playground improvements, for the city to receive a playground grant that is applicable only to the equipment and not the resurfacing. And so in years past, the CIP has been separated accordingly. Just as an additional example.
Thank you very much, Ms. Agula. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Al. Vice Chair Reyes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I would like to echo what Commissioner Al said about the presentation and the content of the report. It's all there significantly, it's great. It's good reading and kind of give you an insight on where the money's going and what's the future and current operations going on in the city. My question is regarding the circulation element. It's just page two. Goal CIR-4, it says, "Enhance the safety of all motorists on the city street system." I understand that we have to ensure the safety of all the motorists in our system, but who deals with the pedestrian safety and bicyclists and joggers in the street? Is that part of this, your group or safety committee or?
So as part of Public Works projects, we do consider pedestrian safety, vehicular safety, and also safety of people on bikes, people on motorized wheelchairs. So there are several projects within the CIP that cover that. So there was an annual Traffic Safety Corridor Improvement Program. So we'll look at the entire corridor, look at all the signage, the lighting, the crosswalks, striping, making sure they're striped appropriately. We also do have our curb and sidewalk program. We look at the sidewalks, we look for lifted sidewalks, we look for ADA accessibility. We have the ADA, there's an ADA project in there, and also the CDBG ADA ramps project. So that's improving pedestrian mobility. As well as like the, we have opportunities on our larger projects. So for example, the Delamo Bridge Project, that was supposed to just start off as replacing that bridge over at Delamo. But we're able to secure funds for Metro to actually go further down Five Signals, two miles to the west. And along that corridor, there were six different schools. So we're looking to interconnect all those signals, replace a lot of the signage, add in high-visibility crosswalks, add in bike lanes that will connect to Coyote Creek. And so all those factors that you talked about with regards to safety, those were all included as part of that project and considered when we developed the project. So whenever we develop a project, we look at the streets, we look at the roadways and the sidewalk, and we try to incorporate and improve all the safety elements. And as part of, when we, whenever we do an overlay on a street, we're also required to improve the ADA by law. The only time, some cities, they'll just slowly seal the street, which is considered maintenance, they may not do ADA. But in Cerritos, we aim to improve ADA whenever possible.
So it's safe to say that when we talk about enhancing the safety of all motorists, it encompasses the pedestrian, the cyclist, and the users of the street?
Yes, all modes of transportation, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes. I have no questions, but yeah, I just wanted to echo what my colleagues have said about the Capital Improvement Program. Yeah, the staff report is very comprehensive. I enjoyed hearing all the insightful questions from my colleagues. And then just to see all the different aspects of the plan, just taking account that the ADA, just the bridge, the explanation that staff has provided for a lot of these projects, and as well as continuation of like the tree replacement, the forestation program. Everything's in here, and I'm just really proud of where the city is going and staff's work on all of this. I just want to commend the mayor of the city council and the staff on this plan. So, do I need to enter, open it for public? Yeah, okay. Okay. Now I would like to open public comment for Item 7B. Okay, seeing none, close public comment. And allow, I'd like to entertain a motion for Item 7B, "A resolution of the Cerritos Planning Commission finding the proposed City of Cerritos Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year 2025 to 2026 in conformity with the Cerritos General Plan."
I move to approve 7B?
I second.
There's a motion by Vice Chair Reyes, a second by Commissioner Javeri, Ms. Agula.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will go ahead and activate the electronic voting at this time. If I could get the PowerPoint switched off? Thank you. Electronic voting is open? It's not? Okay, we will go ahead and? Okay, thank you. One moment. All votes in, motion passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Agula. Next agenda item is Item 7C.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 7C this evening is a follow-up of a special project request communicated to staff by a commissioner at the May 8th Planning Commission meeting. For details of this item tonight, I will turn your attention to Advanced Planning Manager Sabrina Chan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agula. Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. At the May 8th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting, Commissioner Chauhan discussed the potential of establishing a new single-family residential zone, RS 4000, to allow new single-family residential development on smaller parcel sizes in the city. The item before you tonight will be a brief introduction to the concept of zoning, a short discussion on Commissioner Chauhan's request, and next steps. So zoning is a land-use tool utilized by cities to regulate development. At the highest level of planning, each city is governed by an adopted general plan. The general plan is a high-level policy document that establishes long-term goals and policies to guide the physical development of a community. The zoning code turns these goals and policies into enforceable regulations through establishing zones for various uses such as residential, commercial, industrial, open space, or mixed use. Further, zoning code establishes development standards within each zone to regulate items such as permitted use, building types, densities, building heights, and setbacks. The primary purpose of zoning is to promote orderly growth, ensure public health and safety, and separate incompatible land uses. Currently in the city, there are 32 zones which are applied to every property located in the city. When a property owner wishes to develop their property, any such development or use needs to conform with the zone and its regulations. So in the city, residential development is permitted under the RS 5000 Single Family Residential Zone when the minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet, RS 6500 Single Family Residential Zone when the minimum lot size is 6,500 square feet, RM Multi-Family Residential Zone, and in various ADPs, area development plans, otherwise known as a specific plan. A majority of residential properties are zoned RS 5000 or RS 6500, depending on the lot size at the original development of the housing tract. Examples of ADPs include the Shadow Park Community, ADP 4, the Aria Apartment Community, ADP 16, and the Plaza Wall Community, ADP 17. When a new project applicant proposes new residential development on property already zoned for residential uses, such as the development project last month on Clarkdale, the project must comply with the city's zoning code and all applicable standards for the specific residential zone. Now, if a proposed project requires rezoning to support a new residential development, the city may create an ADP to establish development regulations specific to the project location. These regulations would address aspects such as density and scale, lot coverage, building setbacks, and building height restrictions in an effort to reduce and minimize potential impacts to adjacent and surrounding land uses while adhering to the city's aesthetic and design standards for a cohesive and high-quality-built environment. All zoning designations within the city must be applied to a specific property or group of properties. There are no properties in the city that are unzoned. Thus, because the city is built out, creating a new RS 4000 zoning designation in an existing residential area would turn existing parcels into legally non-conforming lots, which is not a recommended planning practice, and may create additional legal issues for existing property owners. Additionally, if there was a RS 4000 zoning designation, subdivision of lots to meet the minimum lot size of 4,000 square feet would require existing lots to be larger than 8,000 square feet, which are far and few within the city. Creation of any new zone, including an RS 4000 zone, would entail a complex and intricate assessment of the potential impacts to the city's existing uses, environmental concerns, public input, and community engagement, as well as compliance with all state planning laws. Additionally, staff would caution against spot zoning, which involves assigning a zoning designation to a specific property that is inconsistent with surrounding uses or the goals and objectives of the general plan. A spot zoning may be deemed unlawful if it lacks a valid public purpose or conflicts with the broader goals of the general plan. Potential legal challenges brought against alleged instances of spot zoning can pose additional risks to the city. So now I would like to take a minute to discuss the next steps from here. Policy 6.02 of the city's Policy and Procedure Manual establishes that commissions do not have the authority to establish city policies nor direct use of city resources, including staff time. As such, if the Planning Commission desired to proceed with establishing a new RS 4000 zone, the item would need to be referred to the city council by the Planning Commission by a majority vote for city council consideration and approval. After discussion tonight, if the Planning Commission desires not to proceed with establishment of an RS 4000 zone, the commission would opt to receive and file this report, and no further action would be required. This concludes my presentation. At this time, Director of Community Development Kristen Agula, Assistant City Attorney Shukran Patel, and myself are happy to answer any questions commissioners may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chan, for the staff report. Now open to questions and comments from my colleagues. Commissioner Al?
Thank you, Sabrina, for your excellent report. And I read the report. I understand that one of the main arguments is that the city is 100% built out. So I guess that means that even though we, even if we create a new zoning category, we don't really have any land to apply it to. Now, I completely understand and appreciate Commissioner Chauhan's intention in creating smaller lots and make higher-density housing in our city to attract more residents into the city. But the reality is that it looks like we don't really have any land to apply this new zoning category to. That's number one. Number two is that the RS, the proposed RS 4000- Number two is that the RS, the proposed RS 4000, it's, it does reduce the lot size and increase the density, but not by a whole lot. We already have a RS 5000, so you need to have a total of 20,000 to squeeze out one extra lot. See what I'm saying? So 20,000, you, with RS 5000, you have four lots, right? So with RS 4000, you get five lots. So that's, I'm not sure that's a whole lot of gain in terms of creating a more residential housing in our city. So that's my second argument. The third argument is this. We do have other mechanisms, existing mechanisms, to increase the density. So for instance, ADP is one. Like my neighboring neighborhood Sundance, where there's a lot of townhouses. I believe our city manager lives there as well. I believe that the lot size per household is even less than 4,000. So I think that's an, that's a mechanism that we can use if we want to increase the housing in our city. And also, the other tool is called, is ADU. Like the project we approved last, last meeting. So with the ADU, you basically, you can have two houses on the same lot, right? So that lot is like, what, 65, 6,500? And you get two houses on that one lot. And so, on average, it's even less than 4,000, right? So based on these reasons, I would agree with option two to receive and file this report and take no further action. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if I can intervene. Would it be better if we can have, because he's the one who proposed it, if we can have his view first before we all talk about it?
Sure.
No, I do appreciate deliberative process by which we, so I want to pass this. I have it to you, and I can pass a couple of sheets over to you. So it was not, it's, what is this? This is an experiment in thinking about how we can better use land in a way that is consistent with how City of Saritos and its residents treat their homes, which is, we are primarily a single-family residence-type community. Townhouses are a completely different item to me. Condominiums are different. Apartments are different. While it is appreciable that we don't have any land, that's subjective. Any land can be reallocated. Point number one. Two, I went to the ABC School Board meeting yesterday. We're in a phase of declining enrollment, and four schools are being proposed to be closed. This is jumping the gun way ahead. But should that land become available down the line, wouldn't it be good for the city to have a residential-type zone that the builder could then say, "We can apply"? Right now, we're giving them only two choices, RS 65 and 5000. What I'm asking for is an opportunity for people to consider this, should they choose to. And my whole idea in drawing up this little diagram, I'll pass it over here, is to show that RS 4000 is a viable option, consistent with the rules that we have in our planning guidelines, which is if 21st, 20 feet, you don't use that space. There's a driveway there. If you have a garage, let's have a two-car garage. Let's have a square, so if I stay within this current framework, it actually meets the requirements that you already have in terms. The whole idea is that, I'm not trying to push anything here, but can we have a discussion about the possibility, if land becomes available, are we amenable to having this type of code? Or is this a process that we'll have to go through again when land becomes available? And it won't be so lengthy that people are turned off and they come up with a different plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Chauhan. Any additional comments or questions, colleagues?
I don't have any question at this time, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Javeri?
I think it is a good option to have. It's not that we have to implement it every time, but maybe if we have that as an option, the city or the builder can fall back onto when time arises, or if need be. That's my perspective.
Hey, thank you. I don't have any additional questions or comments. Should I entertain a motion for the two options?
Thank you, Tripolito. I would recommend, similar to other new and old business items, before we entertain a motion, open up for public comments, if anybody in the audience would like to speak on this. And then, before we make a motion, or, excuse me, Madam Chair, before a motion is entertained, I do want to just clarify. I know Ms. Chan provided the clarification in her agenda report, but pursuant to Policy 6.02, the, the action before the Planning Commission is whether or not to refer this to the city council for the city council's consideration of allocating staff and financial resources on this special project request. As indicated in the agenda report, the creation of a zone, the creation of development standards has real potential impacts. And so, there would be significant and substantial costs in preparing the appropriate California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, assessment to any such creation of a zone, and then a significant amount of time for staff resources to establish this zone. And so I just want to provide the clarification that the action before you is not to direct staff to create RS 4000s. It's direct staff to refer this to the city council for the council's determination on directing staff to do so. So with that said, if amenable to the chair, it'd be appropriate to open for public comments at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I'll open it up to public comment, item 7C. Anyone, please come to a podium and identify yourself.
Yes, hi, I am Saritos Mayor Frank Aurelio Yokoyama. I'm a resident of Saritos. I first wanted to thank Sabrina Chan and Kristen Aguilera for this agenda report. I appreciated learning, being, having a refresher about all the zoning here in our City of Saritos. I just wanted to say I'm really glad to be here at this Planning Commission meeting, and I just wanted to thank, for me, I wanted to thank Chair Gloria Polito for her service here on this Planning Commission. And I'm honored that you have served the City of Saritos in the capacity of a planning commissioner these last couple of years. And I am honored, and the city is very lucky, that you are the chair of the Planning Commission. So thank you very much, Chair Polito, for your service to the Planning Commission, to the city council, and to the City of Saritos. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional, thank you very much, Mayor Yokoyama, I appreciate some of your comments. Any additional comments for specifically item 7C? Okay, public comments are closed. And then, so the option at this point, recommended by the staff, is either to vote by majority in option one, or vote for option two. So would we do, choose an option, or do both separately at a time and take a vote on each?
So option one and two are established under Policy 6.02. At this time, it would be appropriate for a member of the Saritos Planning Commission to make a motion for either option one or option two. Rather than taking option one first and option two second, it's if there's a motion on the floor for either of the options.
Commissioner Javeri?
Thank you, Chair. So if at all we do go with option one, recommending the city council to look into it, what, how much is the cost that we are looking at? Approximate?
Approximately. So I can't, at this point, determine the cost of staff resources or staff time, but I'll give a similar example. As mentioned in the presentation and by Commissioner Al, the city works with property owners very frequently in potentially rezoning their property by the creation of an area development-specific plan. So let's just say hypothetically, a property is currently zoned commercial. The property owner wants to develop residential as part of the project entitlements, the development project. We bring forth a rezoning of that property from commercial to an area development plan. That process, the rezoning, usually after the preparation of an initial study, results in the preparation of a mitigated negative declaration or an environmental impact report. Right now, we have several projects that are undergoing sequo analysis by way of a mitigated negative declaration to the tune of about, again, it ranges, but about $100,000 to do the sequo analysis of just that rezoning action. So we're looking at, you know, and it depends, I mean, we'd have to get proposals from consultants to prepare the sequel analysis, but in short, that is a hard cost that would basically be guaranteed to be needed.
Thank you so much, because as I understand, going by the council meetings, that financially, we are in a tight situation. So would that be an additional burden on the city?
That is correct, Commissioner Javeri. Through the city council's study sessions and the, in the budget review process, we are, the proposed budget is aligned with the city council's strategic planning goals and objectives. But at present, in, city staff at the direction of the city manager is working with the city council to close the gap of, we'll call it a budget deficit at this time. That is correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Javeri. Any more questions or comments?
Can I make a motion?
Commissioner Al?
I will, given the circumstances, including the financial impact, I would like to make a motion to receive and file the report and take no further action.
I would like to second the motion.
Thank you. Because this is not an approve or denial motion, we'll go ahead and do a roll, verbal roll-call vote on this. We have a motion by Commissioner Al for option two, receiving file of this report and take no further action, and a second by Vice Chair Reyes. So at this time, we'll do roll-call vote. Commissioner Al?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauhan? Commissioner Javeri?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Reyes?
Yes.
Thank you. And Chair Polito?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion to receive and file, take no further action, passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is item number eight, reports. First is item 8A, reports from designated commission liaison.
Yes, thank you, Chair Polito. Tonight, I have three reports for the benefit of the Planning Commission. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission is scheduled for Wednesday, July 2nd, right before the Fourth of July holiday. Tonight, I am fortunate to introduce those in attendance and members of the Planning Commission to the City of Saritos's new current planning manager, Amanda Acuna. She comes to the City of Saritos with great experience in, in planning and will help lead the current planning team in development projects and permit review, design review process, essentially the projects that are subject to review by the Planning Commission with the support of Amanda Acuna. So at this time, I would like to turn the remarks to Ms. Acuna for a few comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilera. And good evening, Chair Polito and members of the Planning Commission. Again, I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Amanda Acuna, and I'm honored to take on the role here as the current planning manager for the City of Saritos. As the commission has observed tonight and mentioned, and I have also observed the hard work and dedication that its staff brings to the level of its work that's brought before the commission, and I commit myself to the same level of work before you. And so I look forward to the development projects that hope to shape the city that are brought before you at a future meeting dates. Thank you.
Thank you. My last report this evening, unfortunately, is a, is a very bittersweet report. I echo the, the comments by Mayor Yokoyama. I am sad but excited for her as well to report that this evening will be Chair Polito's last meeting on the Planning Commission. And I just want to take a moment to acknowledge, seriously acknowledge the insightful and thoughtful consideration that Ms. Polito provides to this Planning Commission. You have been instrumental in reviewing industrial projects and commercial projects and single-family residential projects, where these are investments by the community. They're investments by the property owners. And I, and I speak on behalf of all of staff here, am very grateful to have this opportunity to serve with you since July 2022. I appreciate the due diligence and review you have done of every item that comes before you, and it's truly been my pleasure, and in my opinion, the city's pleasure, to have you preside on the Planning Commission, but just recently as well, preside as chair of the Planning Commission. So the honor is that of mine and the community, and I know the colleagues here before you and, and that have served on the Planning Commission previously with you. I, I thank you for your service to this commission, and I'm very fortunate to have had the opportunity to work alongside you these past three years. Honor is all mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilera, for those beautiful comments. I really appreciate it. And first of all, I wanted to thank, well, first acknowledge our mayor and council members that are here, Mayor Frank Yokoyama, Councilmember Jennifer Hong, and my husband Mark Polito, councilman. First of all, I wanted to thank Mayor Frank Yokoyama for trusting me for this position and thinking of me. Two years ago, when he called me, I was on the road coming back from an event in Ventura, and he made the call. So I was, I was actually taken aback and quite surprised, to be honest. But after much thought, he gave me the time to think about it, and I happily accepted. So I really enjoyed this position, learning about community development, planning, and everything that goes along with it. I want to thank the, the staff. I'm so honored to work alongside a staff that is, I always say that we have the best staff in town, and no one compares to them. They work so hard, they're so diligent. They work so many hours just to help support us in this position that we hold. So I'm eternally grateful to all of you, and former staff and former attorneys that I've worked with as well, and former colleagues. I've worked with as well, and former colleagues on the Commission, and my current ones that are here with me. I'm so honored just to work alongside you with all your experience, with your, your knowledge, your community involvement, your insightful questions and comments. You know, it's, it, it's all for fruitful discussion and for the best interest of our city and our residents. So I think our city should be proud of what also caliber of people we have in this community who are willing to serve and make a difference. And then, lastly, I wanted to thank my, my parents who moved here to Saritos in 1979, and who, when I took on this commission position, were always supportive and watched, especially my late mother. She'd always make a point to ask me when they were and make a point to watch. So I, I thank them. My mother-in-law, who served on the Commission before me in the Fine, Fine Arts and Historical Commission, she gave some useful tips. So I'm turning a great call to her. And then, last but not least, to my wonderful and supportive family. They're my rock, they're the reason that I do the things that I do. My husband, Mark, who I've been married for 25 years, but been together almost 40 years next year, because we met and got together in high school at Whitney High School. So, yeah, high school, college sweethearts, and then happily married. And we have two wonderful children, our daughter, Malia, and Mark Jr., who have grown up in this community. I'm so grateful to have them, have them be my support and my guidance and just with me in this, in this wonderful thing called life. So I wanted to just thank everyone, the residents, and I think y'all, I'm gonna miss y'all, but you know, I'm not, gonna be no stranger to the city. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So next is item eight B, reports from Planning Commission members. First, we'll start with Commissioner Javeri.
Thank you, Chair. Firstly, congratulations to the planning manager, Amanda. Thank you so much for coming to Saritos and welcome aboard. It's great to see the mayor of Saritos and two council members, Councilmember Polito and Councilmember Hong, three council members for the first time ever in the Planning Commission meeting. So thank you very much. Good to see you guys. And more importantly, Madam Chair, it has been great working with you. It has been a real pleasure. Three years, we don't know how those three years have been, but it was great working with you, and we're gonna miss you. Sorry to see you go. Wish you all the very best in all your endeavors.
Thank you, Commissioner Javeri. Commissioner Chauhan?
Well, congrats to you, and we are going to miss you. I've only been on the Commission for a few months, third meeting. Let's see. I went to England for three weeks, went to see my mom, they moved home, so it was a great trip back home. But the experience was, I went from here to London Heathrow. I caught a train from the airport to the other train station. So then I caught a train from London to Leicester. I caught a bus to go to my house. This is what we are missing here in the United States. Yes, I know we have light rail coming, but it's just not, we don't have the infrastructure to sustain that level of travel at that speed. So yes, can we do more? Yeah. But it will require investment across the board. You are not going to achieve that with one light rail. Yesterday, I went to ABC USD Board meeting, where because of the declining enrollment, four schools are being proposed to be closed or consolidated. Now, this is not firmed up, but the truth is, we are an aging city. We do need young people to move in. How that comes about, we don't know. But I wish young people would have the opportunity to own a piece of Saritos like I do. And so in my attempt to do this, is really just a forward look. If you start an idea, it will blossom into something down the line. Nothing is quick, nothing is fast in governance anywhere. But I do appreciate my colleagues. When I ask for input, I don't ask for it right or wrong, it is that, just a perspective. And if we don't come up with new ideas, we're never going to solve anything. And last of all, great meeting, appreciate you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Chauhan. Commissioner Al?
First, first of all, I echo Javeri's appreciation of our mayor and City Council members. Thank you very much for your support. You are the only audience remaining in this hall. Secondly, I want to say it's been a pleasure and, and honor and pleasure work, being colleague, being, working together with Chair, Madam Chair Polito, and really appreciate all your friendship, your help, and I wish you best of luck in whatever future endeavor you're gonna embark on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Al. Vice Chair Reyes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is the last time I'm going to call you Madam Chair, but I know we will work again. If people don't realize or don't know, Ms. Polito is really, Ms. is really active in the community, so you'll see her around, not as the chair capacity as a Planning Commission, but she will be involved, she'll make her input, she'll make her mark, and she and her family have done a lot of wonderful things in the city, with or without accolades. So they do it because they love the city, they, they grew up in the city, they're raising a family in the city, and they will continue to do the work between Gloria and Mark. We're looking forward to seeing you trailblaze a lot of things in the city. I have nothing to report but that, and also I'd like to welcome Amanda, Ms. Acuna, by way of Westminster in Gardena, and now she's here. We are so happy to, I am so happy to, to have you, having a small chat with you, really interested in learning more about what you do. It's, my God, we have a good recruiting people. Do we recruit, I think, Saritos recruits on its own. I mean, the, the city alone, the staff, I think that's the same with ABC School District. People come to the district to work, and actively, they can work anyplace. Some of the teachers can take lower salary because of the community, of the parents, of the, of what the city offers for the people that teach here. But same thing with the staff in Saritos. It's a family, I, some of the staff here now, full-time staff, I met them when they were part-time, working at the, at the, at the parks, at the swim center, in different places. I met them when their parents, I know their parents, you know, I was a school board member for 16 years, and I know them to the school district. So it's great, it's, I don't know how to tell you that you, you did the right choice. I know you researched this place before you embarking on this, in this new job, so welcome. And again, thank you, Ms. Madam Chair, and looking forward to working with you in a different capacity.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes. I wanted to again thank my, well, thank all my colleagues for your really wonderful and kind comments. It's truly a pleasure working with all of you. Yeah, it just means a lot to me, to work with people that are really intentional about what they want to contribute and what legacy they want to leave. So, you know, I applaud all of you and just thank you for working with me. I also want to echo a welcome to Amanda Acuna in your new role. You have such a wonderful staff to work with and good mentors that'll take you, and I know you'll probably be here as long as your predecessor, Sandy, who's been here, was here for 30 years. That's something to work towards. It's just an indication of how much staff loves the city and want to remain here. So congratulations. I attended the Memorial Day Ceremony, and again, congratulations to Chelsea, the mayor and the City Council, for a wonderful event, wonderful memorial event. And then lastly, I wanted to wish all the father and father figures out there a Happy Father's Day. And then this meeting's adjourned.